Honolulu to consider the repeal of the shore water event rules and the adoption of proposed title nineteen chapter twenty five. City and County of Honolulu Administrative Rules Governing Shorewater Events. When a parks and recreation proposes to repeal existing rules governing shore water events, the proposed rules add new definitions and clarity. Oh, I'm sorry, and clarify existing definitions. H L applications for North Shore calendar from a calendar year to a surf season calendar. Adopt new regulations governing surf events for South Shore. And creates an after event report for North and South Shore events. So the proposed new rules are summarized. No, sorry, if you're looking for. The for both summer proposals, it's on the table. So the proposed new rules are summarized as follows. Nineteen dash two five dash one purposes for the adoption of the rules. Nineteen dash five dash two identifies that these rules apply to city parks. Nineteen dash two five dash three definitions have been added and existing definitions have been amended. Nineteen dash two five dash four states that a park use permit is required to hold a shore water event. Nineteen dash two five dash five establishes the permit application. Nineteen dash two five dash six identifies the permit application deadline for surf events in North Shore. Nineteen dash two five dash seven identifies the permanent application deadline for surfing events held on the South Shore. Nineteen dash two five dash eight identifies the conditions for parts improvement. Nineteen dash two five dash nine identifies when a permit may be revoked. Nineteen dash two five dash ten established regulations that will govern shore water events. Nineteen dash two five dash eleven establishes the regulations that will govern surfing events held on the North Shore. Nineteen dash two five dash twelve establishes the regulations that will govern surf events held on the South Shore. Nineteen dash two five dash thirteen establishes a show, I'm sorry, establishes a system for ranking applications on the North and South Shore calendars. Nineteen dash two dash fourteen requires our permits he to identify the city. Nineteen dash two five dash fifteen establishes a criteria to deny or revoke a permit. And nineteen dash two five dash sixteen establishes penalties for violation of the rules. An in person and virtual public hearing will be held on October twentieth twenty twenty three from two P M to four P M. Those attending in person can visit Kauaole Hale, one thousand Ulo O'Gia Street, Suite three twelve, Kauaole, Hawaii, nine six seven zero seven. The virtual meeting will be held via Zoom and can be accessed using the following link. All interested persons are urged to attend the public hearing and data views or arguments in the time limit provided. For consideration by the Department of Parks and Recreation. Persons unable to attend or wishing to present additional comments may mail written testimony to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Executive Services Division at one thousand Ulo O'Gia Street, Suite three zero nine, Kauaole, Hawaii, nine six seven zero seven. No later than October twenty seventh twenty twenty three. Interested persons may review the current rules to be repealed and proposed rules starting today. But in the five days prior to the day of the public hearing during the hours of seven forty five A M. To four thirty P M at the Department of Parks and Recreation. Office, a copy of the rules to be repealed and proposed. Rules shall be mailed to any person who submits a written request. To the above address and pays the required fee of twelve dollars and ten cents for the cost of duplicating the documents and postage. A complete set of current rules to be repealed and proposed rules is also available. Free of card on the Honolulu Department Parks and Recreation Internet website under the rules and regulations tab under W W W. Dot Honolulu dot gov slash parks. Individuals interested in attending the public hearing who may have special needs or require special assistance. May contact the Department of Parks and Recreation at eight zero eight seven six eight three zero zero six. By writing to the above address or emailing parks at Honolulu dot gov at least five business days before the public hearing. So those of the public notice again bear with me, there's a couple other things that I'm going to go over. So before I begin, I would like to go over. Uh, the reason for the rule change. We are hoping the new rules provide very clarity and a simpler process for shore water events. So the city council adopted resolution twenty dash twelve. Uh, S D one in January twenty twenty urging the Department of Parks and Recreation or D P R. To adopt rules to ensure gender equity for all competitive surfing contests held on the North Shore of Wauwuhu. Over the course of twenty twenty one, council members repeatedly requested D P R. To amend administrative rules to promote gender equity in North Shore surf contests. Which also supported by several promoters of female surf events and some gender equity organizations. Simultaneously, D P R began to receive requests to limit the number of surf contests. Held on the five beaches along Waikiki and urban Honolulu South Shore during the summer surf season. The number of surf contests has grown to close up the breaks in these areas. I mean, excuse me, my mayor Blang Giardi has spoken with the community on this matter. And agreed to support the restrictions similar to that of the North Shore. So the public process to start the shore water amendment. So D P R formed a shore water advisory group or known as SWAG. In July twenty twenty one to conduct a public process to evaluate proposed administrative rule changes. SWAG members were appointed by Mayor Mayor Blang Giardi and it included Megan Stotts. Which was the deputy or is the Deputy Administrator of Jalen, putting in ocean recreation. This was to ensure or Miss Stotts was nominated to ensure D P R rule amendments were user friendly and consistent with state rules. Kanata Ari or Kanani Ari, excuse me, North Shore resident, small business owner on North Shore. And a community volunteer assisting with you surf events. And then lastly, Keone Downey, who is small business owner or surf shop owner. Surfing family and member of a prior SWAG appointed by Mayor Caldwell. So the SWAG held six public meetings between July twenty twenty one and May twenty twenty two. Meetings were run in accordance with the Sunshine Law with forum formal public notice supplemented with social media announcements. Public testimony and minutes posted to the D P R website. Surf promoters holding D P R permits were sent email notice. In addition to the meetings, the SWAG conducted a survey and making special effort to consult promoters, surfers and community members. The survey ran from December sixteen twenty one through February sixteen twenty twenty two. During the North Shore surf season in an effort to reach surfers and community members during this peak event period. Two hundred and eighty persons provided survey responses. Upon completing the initial draft amendments, D P R conducted additional outreach through four Zoom meetings in twenty twenty three to discuss the rules. The draft rules were were posted on the D P R website for review prior to the meetings. Lastly, D P R worked with the City Council Parks Committee and posted notice and presented the draft rules to the council and the public on August twenty third of twenty twenty three. Through this process, we took all feedback into account when drafting the proposed shore water rules. In an effort to ensure that we were in compliance with resolution twenty dash twelve. And as stated earlier, to provide an easier and more transparent process for shore water events. So lastly, I'll go over a summary of proposed changes. Now again, I would also like to highlight the um, this list is not exhaustive. And it does not contain all changes in the rules, but here is a brief summary. So the proposed summary of changes, the technical changes of rule. Uh, A shorten the application deadline from ninety days to sixty days to closer align. With Dolbar D L N R Marine Event Permit Application Requirements. B, we no longer require the Dolbar D L N R Marine Event Permit in order to permit the shore water event. And C shore water applications must be received at least sixty days prior by mail. Or in person with signature required. Those who mail the application, the application will be considered received when it is delivered at date stamp by the Department of Parks and Recreation Permits Office. Located at the Frank Fossey Municipal Building at six five zero South King Street, first floor Honolulu, point nine six eight one three. So number two, the ranking system changes in the new rules as follows. Ranking system for North and South Shores. All applications are ranked on two different criteria. Mitigation of community impacts and diversity, including age, professional slash amateur event. Type of event, gender or and or abilities. Points are awarded to each application for each of the following categories. Applications are then counted based on the highest to lowest point ranking until all allotted days for each beach are assigned. So mitigation of community impacts, traffic and parking is zero to three points. Crowd control is zero to three points. Resident and government act, uh, service access is zero to three points. Cleaning is zero to three points. Diversity, age is zero to three points, amateur or professional is zero to three points. Primary event type is zero to three points, abilities is zero to three points, and then gender is zero to twelve points. North Shore surf calendar triennial permits. So the rules change the North Shore's surf events to September to May period. The rules change the process to a surf calendar rather than using a calendar year. Meaning one North Shore surf year will run from September in one year to. From sorry, from September and one year to May of the next year, example, September twenty twenty five through May of twenty twenty six. Current rules use a calendar year, so events proposed for a period spanning December through January must file two applications. And risk having one denied in the conflict resolution process. All regulations limiting the number of North Shore event surf event, the number of events at any individual North Shore beach. And the cooling off period between North Shore surf events remain unchanged. So for South Shore events. The rules create a similar but not identical cap on the number of South Shore surfing events at the five South Shore beach parks. The beaches at the South Shore rules affect is Kohiyo Beach Park. Kapilani Park Beach, which is known as Queen's Beach. Koala Basin Park, Kakaoa Waterfront Park and Alamo Regional Park and other South Shore parks as approved by the director. The South Shore rules permit up to two surfing events at a time on the five regulated beaches. With exception, with the exception that only one event may be permitted at either Kohiyo Beach and. Uh, Kapilani Park Beach are known as Queen's Beach. Impose a ten day cooling off period between surfing events at Koala Basin Park, Kakaoa Waterfront Park and Alamo Regional Park. And impose a ten day cooling off period at both Kohiyo Beach Park and Kapilani Park Beach, again known as Queen's Beach. After surfing event at either Kohiyo Beach Park or Kapilani Park. The proposed rules for South Shore also differ. From North Shore in two other ways. Annual permit and not a triennial permit, which means applications are submitted yearly, so every year for a surfing event at the South Shore beach parks. And it applies to the South Shore town, I'm sorry, applies a South Shore calendar to match the South swell. May to September with exceptions uh, within title nineteen dash two five dash twelve B. And then lastly, after event reports for North and South Shores. After event written reports are required to document whether the event was held in conformance with the criteria. That the application was ranked on failure to file an after. Event report or failure to hold an event in conformance with the rank criterion. May subject the promoter to a point deduction in the next application process. Okay, so with all that being said, I know that was quite lengthy, I apologize, um, have to go through all of that. Uh, so we'll move now to public testimony regarding the shore water rules. I would like to go over some housekeeping rules first though before we start. So this meeting is being recorded via Zoom and will record the entirety of this hearing. Pursuant to section ninety two dash three point seven of Hawaii revised statutes. This meeting will be conducted as a remote meeting by interactive conference technology with the following procedures in effect for the meeting. Members of the public will be allowed to provide oral testimony on the proposed shore water rules in two ways. Remotely via Zoom and in person in room three one two or three twelve at Kauaole Hale. Before testifying, each person shall state their full name and organization if you are representing an organization. Each speaker may not have anyone else read their statement and is limited to two minutes for their testimony. Once the two minute timer alert rings, we will ask you to wrap up your testimony. If you are a remote testifier, when your name is called, please monitor your screen and activate your audio feed when prompted. I will then give persons who have not registered an opportunity to offer testimony. Please utilize the hand raised feature or raise hand in Zoom to be called on. We will take registered in person testimony first, followed by unregistered in person testimony. Once all in person testifiers have given their testimony, we will then proceed to register remote testimony via Zoom and then unregistered remote testimony. All written testimonies, including the testifier's address, email address and phone number will be available to the public. As a courtesy, please silence or turn off all cell phones for the duration of this hearing. And I want to make this very clear, the purpose of this hearing is to receive public testimony and comments. Either written and or verbally concerning the proposed shore water rules. This hearing is not a forum for discussion and it is not a question and answer session. It is solely for the purpose of gathering testimony. All testimony either written and or verbal received today will be taken into consideration and any future decision regarding the rule will be determined. Well, thank you for bearing with me on that. I know that was very lengthy. Um, and we're going to just drop right into the uh. Uh, testimony here, so first person in person is Mahino Chillingford. If you'd like to come up, please sit.
Aloha, everybody.
Aloha.
Um, first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here and and so we can talk story on all of this. Um. I just wanna let you folks know that I'm representing the Huihohe and Alu. And beach specific is for pipeline, so we're not. Here to represent any other shoreline, but the North Shore, but mainly pipeline. Um. I just feel that the rules, especially in the permit ranking is a little bit too blanketed. And meaning that. Whatever happens on the South Shore should not mirror the North Shore, and I I mean that because. As we know, there's a lot of wave riders in this room that. Bull or not bulls, but queens. And pipeline are two different animal, so having the same rules. Across the board for all those breaks that that shouldn't be allowed. Um. Another thing too is we need to clarify the ages. In the age, you know, you have here diversity. And it lists the ages, but it doesn't say from what age to what age, so that would be helpful. Um. What else? And we need clarification on the failed to deliver on page thirty six letter H. We needed a clarification on the fail to deliver, so if that could be done, that would be really helpful. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Rich Stevenson.
How's it, Rich Stevenson, Huihohe and Alu. Uh, my topic to cover is to seek clarification for the after event reports. Uh, mainly is this report where we clarify or justify. Why, what was in the permit or what was advertised? That was gonna happen in the event doesn't actually happen, meaning. If we had opened it up to all genders and age groups required and they decide to pull out. For example, we're talking specifically for pipeline. Do we get automatically? Ding for that when we've opened it up? But individuals come and they decide the wave is too dangerous. It's too big, so on their own, they decide not to enter the contest, even though it was made available for them. So we need clarification on that, are we automatically ding? Or is this after event report allows us to explain to you folks why that didn't happen? So that's my main concern and. I believe one of our other members will take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So he gives me the time, right?
Okay, next up is David Stanton.
Hello, thank you for the time. My name is David Stanton. I also represent the Huihohe and Alu. Um, there's four topics that I would like to cover today. Um, the first one is, you know, we would really like to uh. To meet your requirements that you guys are stating inside of this, this new regulations that you guys are giving us. But within these regulations, there's a lot of things that are gray um, for and and we'll go ahead and talk about that. Um. For what what the we have as trying to ask you guys is that pipe should be standalone type of permitting process. You know, you guys took two hundred and twenty people out of seven hundred and forty thousand people that surf here in Hawaii. That's less than two percent of the population of surf. So you guys are taking a small percentage of surfers and making this kind of documentation, which is fine. Okay, so what we're here to to ask you guys is if pipeline. In every year since nineteen eight, uh, two thousand eighteen averages twelve to twenty two deaths or near deaths people. We're asking you to kind of consider pipeline might be like the Eddie. It might have to be a standalone type of place. So what we're asking you guys to do is not try and turn the requirements or change the requirements, which is saying maybe the spot here is a little bit dangerous. What we have to think as contest directors, we have to think of safety first, right? So there's a couple things on page thirty three, um, you guys want us to be. Three points on that, you guys go ahead and say exclusive devote to under representative types of events, okay? So you guys are saying you want us to go ahead and exclusive to under representative people, so ages. Can you clarify the ages? Are we talking zero to twelve? Forty to hundred and twenty? Okay, the group of servers right now basically go from twelve to about twenty one. So if we have an eight year old surfer come out in our contest eighteen to twenty feet at pipes, which is crazy. And he goes ahead and not make it that day. But we're trying to meet your requirements at pipeline, one of the most dangerous spots in the world. So I'm I'm, we are asking you guys to take a little bit of consideration on this spot. We're not telling you guys to change and we're not asking you guys to meet the requirements of Queens. Bulls is a little bit different on the south side, you got Makaha. Okay, maybe because we're fortunate to live here in Hawaii that will take consideration of pipeline. Okay, so that is what we're trying to ask for. Give us clarification on your age, uh, on your age limits on page thirty three.
Sorry, if you're gonna wrap it up.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have quite a few people.
Okay, so uh, uh, in closing over here, we want to meet your requirements that you guys are requesting of us. We we do love our community, we're trying to give people pro and amateur. A spot on a big stage on one of the greatest spots in the world. What you guys are doing is tying our hands. We are a local community based. Group and we're asking you to go ahead and give us a little bit more clarification clarification so we can meet your requirements. Thank you for this time.
Okay, up next is Philokitomorrow.
Hi, my name is Philip Kidomara and I am representing Kaikemado Okekai Hohonu. Um. I'm a twenty eight year old and I'm a body surfer at Point Panic. I'm a contest organizer for body surfing events and I oppose the rule change because. The new set of rules look to marginalize small communities of wave riders such as body surfers and body porters. Body surfing competitions has self inspired me to body surf. The limits on contests. And ranking criteria are not conducive for small wave riding communities that have a gender gap. There's no opportunity to build that gender capacity, either you have it or you don't. This is further compounded by the criteria of many of mitigation for community impacts, which requires extra funding. And manpower that small wave riding communities may just not have. This may pit body surfing against board riders that could apply for competitions at Point Panic and Kakaoa Waterfront Park. Hawaii Administrative Rules thirteen dash two hundred fifty four dash fourteen, no boards other than handboards are allowed at Point Panic. And Point Panic is the only body surfing specific break in the state. These new rules may potentially erase body surfing events and create conflict with. With board surfers at Point Panic through an increase of board riding free surf and board riding events. I ask that you exclude Point Panic and body surfing events at the Point Panic Body Surfing Area so that you can continue on. Personally, I wish there was an alternative measure for gender equity like subsidized entries for underrepresented genders. For examples, males can pay us, pay the subsidy and females or non gender. People may get a discounted entry. That's it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Hmm. Up next is Wendell Aoki.
Hi, my name is Wendell Oke, I represent Hawaii Surfing Association and Hawaii Surfing Production. One is for high school surfing and one is for our regular surfers. To qualify for the U S Championship. The one problem we have in now is that you guys marking that summer doesn't start. To me and we have. A championship from kids all over the islands coming down here to qualify for the U S Championship in April. And the reason why we did that also is because the fares become very high in May. Because they have to find out whether they qualify or not. And. Like, we have, it's funny because we have every year, April, the first two weeks at Haleiwa. And then the third week at boats. But we're also gonna need like not only two days at both because we having like three hundred kids trying to qualify for the U S Championship. And Hawaii does fare real well up there on Motivia first or second. And and we asked that, you know, there should be a allowance, you know, on championship. Events versus just the regular event, which you guys allow only two days. And the problem also we have is because you guys want the high school separated from our regular surfing. Because normally we take like three days or four days. And the reason why is see like the schools can only surf on Saturday. And if the first, if we take them for the first weekend. And the waves are big, we don't want to send them out because they're not as good as the regular surfer. So what we do is flip flop, who's gonna serve the first weekend and second weekend. It's our most important complaint about it.
Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, up next is going to be Conrad Morgan.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the time. My name is Connor Morgan. I'm resenting Kaikei Malo Okekai Hohonu. Um, I've been body surfing um, for almost nine years now. Um, contests have been a big part of. What inspired me similar to Philip, he was one of the guys I was watching back in the day. Um, and contests have been super integral for really perpetuating the sport and bringing the community together. Um, especially with the small numbers that we have here in Hawaii, um, fine body surfing is something special. Um, and Point Panic. Um, at Kakaoa Waterfront Park is so integral to our community and our identity and our expression of the art of Kohonalu um, here in Wauwuhu. Um, when it comes to the gender equity question, um, the amount of Wahine um, in our body serving community who've been in the water. Um, and who've been in contests um, in is really bolstered by being able to have contests to show the community. Um, what body surfing is that there are women competing. Um, one of our good friends, um, a super like amusing body surfer charity. Um, she said that seeing other Wahine compete inspired me to compete and further my love for body surfing. Although body surfing is a small community, competitions allow us to spread awareness of the sport. And gain new supporters and participants. Um, I think it's unfair and biased. Um, the ranking criteria against body surfing. And gain new supporters and participants. Uh, I think it's unfair and biased, um, the ranking criteria against body surfing. Wahine body surfers are on the rise. It would be a real unfortunate and shame, um, for the number to fade if we aren't able to perpetuate the art and sport. Through competition. Um, I strongly oppose the, the rule changes, um, including Kaka Aqua Waterfront Park and Body Surfing. Um, as it pits us against board riders, against the surfing community, um, win that place. Um, and our sport and art and expression is something different, special, unique, um, the first type of wave riding. Especially here in Hawaii. Um, and I ask that the Kaka Aqua Waterfront Park and specifically the Point Panic Body Surfing Area is not included. Um, in this new uh, regulations of governing of the shorewater events. Um, thank you for.
Thank you. Okay, up next is Ronnie Wami.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ronnie Wami. I represent Friends of Kiwalos. And we are a nonprofit organization that our mission is to protect, preserve and Malama. Kiwalo Basin Park and the surrounding shorelines, including Alamoana Park and Kaka Aqua Waterfront Park. So our mission is to uh, preserve public access, ocean access, which is very important for people of Hawaii. And by reading your proposed rules briefly, I saw some concerns about. Fifteen-day holding periods, four-day contests. And I feel that's modeled after North Shore, but I want to tell the committee that. You cannot compare North Shore to South Shore. North Shore is professionals. They're surfing for a living. Big waves, dangerous waves, like you said. South Shore, more amateur, kids for fun. And it's like comparing apples and oranges and you cannot do a blanket rules. Or North Shore and South Shore. It's like, you know, one size does not fit all. So our suggestion, what we have done, what we have done at Kiwalo Basin Park is we. Uh, organized a MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with Do Bor. When you first started in oh-seven, it was ACDA because they had held the land permit. Now it's city and county departments of Parks and Rec. So our MOU is community-based for our park. And I suggest, a suggestion would be like people I heard, Pipeline, uh, Panics. They should have their own rules at their own spot, like community-based because they have their own. Special wants and needs. So basically that's what I want to portray. And I have samples of our MOU that you could look at as a sample of community-based uh, work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next is Jason Sakai.
Aloha, I'm Jason Sakai. I'm a free surfer at Kiwalo. Now, I s- I started surfing in the sixties. I gave up for ten to twelve years, but also raised the family. When I left Kiwalo's, there were zero contests. It's in this, early eighties. When I came back ten, twelve years later. There were eighteen contests per year at Kiwalo Basin, like every weekend. It was crazy. So Ron and I. I'm, I'm, I was supposed to part of Fred's of Kiwalo's, the organization. We cut that number down from eighteen to eight. But it was crazy. And so what I'm saying is every surf area is different and I totally agree. With the way that every, 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 every place is different, but be, be, just be, be, be wise about it. It has to do with the general public and what's best for the general public. I'm not against surfing contests. Carissa Moore, the Monises, they also have Kiwalo's. Kiwalo's is special. It's easy access. That's why everybody wants to go over there. Easy and more easy. The judging, the scaffolding, easy air window. But that doesn't mean, you, you know, we, we should have all the contests, so spread them out. The number is the key. How many numbers per spot? And you could have con- it's not the amount of spots, like there's four, five different spots in the pipe. It's, it's about the parking lot. What do you have it at? Straight outs, rennix, the point. Uh, there's four, five different spots at Kiwalo's. It's just one parking lot. And right now we're having a major parking problem. Because of the influx of uh, the condos, there's more people, commercial boating, the commercial boating, uh, patrons parking our parking lot. It's crazy. Call HPD, HPD knows. We're on the line to them, which we're trying to maintain without the boys getting all nuts. So if it's over, if, if it's over, there's too many contests, too many. It's gonna plenty who, who is gonna get nuts. So use wisdom. I, I like what we said, what was, every, every, every spot is different. Body surfing across the channel.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, up next is Robin Erb.
Hi, thank you, Robin Erb for the World Surfing Hawaii. Um. Like you, the WSL is committed to diversity, equity and inclusion, and we too wish to see public resources allocated fairly and equitably. However, the following inconsistencies in the new rules ultimately defeat the goals of fairness and equity. First, before competition day limit unfairly hurt South Shore events that have already set a precedent for running more than four days. And that have a longstanding track record of success, like Locomotion Surfing to Summer at Alamoana Bowl since nineteen eighty-five. Currently, Surfing to Summer is a combined amateur and pro-am event on the same permit with the same event infrastructure. Thank you, Wendell. This places less stress on the park and returns it to recreational users faster versus setting up and breaking down two separate events. It also lets us reinvest this cost savings into adding pro-am longboard divisions for men and women. None of this is possible within four competition days. We respectfully request six competition days for Surfing to Summer, same as we currently have. To maintain all athlete divisions and its better outcomes for recreational users. Second, the definition of equitable opportunity on page thirty-two is problematic. All WSL Hawaii events award equal prize money and have both men and women divisions. However, contestants and heats are equitably set based on elective participation rates. Any Hawaii resident surfer can choose to enter a WSL event. Our men and women entry fees and deadlines are identical. One hundred men and twenty-two women entered the Sunset Pro Event coming up next week. This ratio has been consistent for many years and we're happy to provide more hard data. We're also keeping the women's Sunset Pro Division open past the deadline to encourage late entries and greater participation. Please define equitable opportunity correctly and replace the word equal with the word equitable. Finally, the new ranking system does not create equity. The most points are given to events exclusive to underrepresented groups. Not to equitable opportunity. In the case of gender, this preference for underrepresented genders directly conflicts with ordinance twenty-one dash eight. Which says city resources should be allocated fairly and without discrimination or preference on the basis of sex and gender. The solution we feel is to give the most points to equitable opportunity for gender and for all categories of diversity. Thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, up next is Alan Leonard.
Hello, um, I'm Alan Leonard, uh, for the, here from the North Shore Body Surfing Club. Uh, we've put together a petition that'll come to you hopefully, I guess, after next Friday by mail. And I was under, uh, Dory said that we can get that to you as long as it's postmarked by next Friday. So the petition basically talks about that we think that this process might need to go back to the neighborhood boards. Um, and there's a few reasons for that, as you can hear, that it really isn't completely. Resolved in some of the issues that were brought up at the previous Zoom calls. Uh, one of the items we brought up was just the Eddie Icau issue and I spoke with Boyce, who's the attorney for the Icaus. And he said there's no problem with this concept that the city may be, want to put definitions in for big wave body boarding. And big wave body surfing at a smaller height. So that the city could possibly, and that, that would be more just so that the, those contests would be able to get a footprint of maybe longer than fourteen days. And still be able to utilize the short pound as, uh, you know, whereas Waimea Bay. You know, a forty-foot base is a twenty-foot day at Waimea and maybe we propose something like thirty-foot waves for a big wave body boarding. Which would be probably fifteen-foot short pound maybe, depending on the swell direction and et cetera. And maybe a, a twenty-foot, you know, day at, of, uh, at Waimea for body surfing, which would be like ten-foot short pound or maybe less. But Waimea is a, is a finicky spot, so you need more time for that. Um, we asked the city to kind of define the diversity that they're using for each category. We're asking them to put into the rules an example of the criteria rating sheet that they use, the, the guys who are appointed to be the judges. Which used to be Miles Suzama and Ron Schwalbaum. Can I, I just, I have a few more points, I know, um. We're asking the, the Sein County to basically, um, make it so that. Point Panic would be taken off of the regulations governing surf events. And the system ranking applications that these guys mentioned because it's, infrastructurally, it's isolated. And also, um, it's the only place that's, it's by statute, by state statute is body surfing only. It doesn't need. To be constrained by the calendar, because Point Panic is a gem and it rarely flourishes, so let's, let it. If there's a day that Point Panic can happen, it won't impact any other contests that are running simultaneously anywhere in Honolulu. And then we've mentioned some other stuff that you'll see in the, in the petition, so that's pretty much it. I think, I did mention in the petition, we, I think we brought up that, um. If you could just change your definition for waiting period from consecutive. I'm sorry?
If you can.
Yeah, consecutive or non-consecutive days, that would allow to resolve an issue that we have this year coming up. Where the city had did this to the body surfing event three years ago for Mike Stewart and our event. Which is only giving us a one-week waiting period to run a four-day event, which is very difficult in that timeframe. Because that's late season pipeline, when it's very difficult to get any kind of good condition. So changing that one word to non-consecutive will make it so that. The staff at the city will have no reason not to allow a permit to work around a, a HASA or an NSA event. They can work in, because they're different locations, there's no cooling off period, so to make it a much more effective thing. You'll get the petition, I already sent it to the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, next is Chris Gardner.
Aloha, I'm Chris Gardner with the North Shore Swim Series. We've been hosting amateur swim races for kids from eight all the way up to eighty. On the North Shore for thirty-four years. I think my big concern is, actually, the Hoos raised a couple of points, but. We're kind of getting roped into the professional and surfing events when we're just basically one day that. Couple times in the summer, but we just want to be careful that we don't get categorized. Where they say, oh, you need forty toilets because you have three hundred swimmers, something to that effect. So we just want to have a little clarification with the amateur. Amateur events. And I think, uh, Huiva, uh, Okra, they'd have the same concern because we are just basically amateur. But thank you for this.
Okay, up next, Mapuana Tector.
Aloha, my name is Mapuana Tector and I'm with the Nana Kuli and Mailei Neighborhood Board. I'm kind of appalled that none of the rest of the Parks and Rec people are here or board people. I think you guys got your nerve trying to much for manage our waters. And in the permitting, there's a lot of. Laws or changes since when you guys do that. And what happened to the stamp act law? So this is sounding like business more than you guys want to cut out of this, but be clear. As far as all the waters in Hawaii. City and county shouldn't be managing. It's us, the people. So I'm gonna represent them as much as I can. My first meeting is November the eighth, Nana Kuli Beach Park. And please, all the surfers come. I used to surf, but that's way back. I at least get a picture and people like proof. Bottom line is, I work with high school students. And if we're doing this to adults, the high school student is not gonna get any chance at all. The permit, you guys say, whoever is the permittee, you guys responsible for security. Police, hallelujahs, you guys. So what are you guys doing? How are you guys giving back? Should be you guys supporting us, not us supporting our own. And then we're sounding like we're getting ripped off. Bottom line. So more of the neighborhood boards should be over here supporting all your surfers. We used to make surfboards too, but guess what? Not everybody is doing it. Can they sell it? Of course, that's opportunities that surf meets. But guess what? Privilege is taken away because you guys like micromanage our waters. The surfers, fishers, and just taking our keiki to swim is our rights. And this is ridiculous.
Thank you. Is there any other in-person that did not get a chance to speak that has not, uh, signed up? No, okay. Alright, so we'll move to remote testimony. Um, we're gonna start with registered. First, Bianca Isaki, are you on the Zoom call?
Yes, I am.
Okay, yep, you may proceed, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um. Yeah, I'm Bianca Isaki. Um, I agree with everyone who said that the North Shore and South Shore and, and also West Side are different. I've been surfing, um. Both shores, but especially like the South Shore, Alamoana and Kiwalo's for about twenty-five years and. I mean, there's just increasing commercial activity everywhere and, um, so I'm particularly worried about the rule that says that. At Kiwalo's, Kaka Aqua and Alamoana, it says no more than six events shall be scheduled at any of these parks, which makes it sound like you can have six events at each park. And I've never, I can't remember any Alamoana surf contests happening. Um, so I don't understand why that's even in there. Um, I think that fixes a lot. And I mean, and I get that kids should have activities and that people, you know, there's some people who like to compete. But it's like all kinds of groups are now, they're grabbing these permits and some, um, just to get an empty break for the day. Um, there's like a lawyer's contest at Kiwalo's. I mean, I mean, I'm a lawyer, but like, should we have one for dentists and are, are, can like doctors do it too? And it doesn't seem like, I don't understand the purpose of that. So I think that, um, that should be something considered too, like. What is the purpose of having these contests? Um, so anyway, those are my main points and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. And that was only, uh, registered. Are there any unregistered?
Yes, you have one. Stefan Ranky.
Thank you for recognizing me. My name is Stefan Ranky. I am currently the president of the Waikiki Roughwater Swim Committee. I want to echo some comments made by Chris Gardner regarding the impact of these rules and regulations on the swimming events. That occur throughout the state. And I, I recognize that these uh, uh, regulations, these proposed rules are designed for, primarily for the surfers. And I've heard some interesting comments today from my friends at Surf. The one thing we haven't heard much about is the impact it'll have on events that aren't surfing events, and that is on swim contests. And that is a concern of mine because the mitigation of impact rules that were mentioned earlier are gonna have a substantial impact on amateur events. That frankly run on a shoestring right now. And the, any, any proceeds typically go to benefit. Other entities within the community. So I'd like there to be some consideration by the rulemakers in this instance. Of, uh, with, uh, dropping out from these reg- rules and regulations, references to non-surfing events. So that the surfers can focus on them, and I think there's some very legitimate concerns raised today. We should have separate rules. We should have separate rules for the swimming and other contests that are referenced in the definition of mitigation or the definition of shoreline water events. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, non-registered remote testifiers?
Yes.
Like any phone, anyone else?
No.
No.
Do you have anyone on the test?
Hello?
Hi.
Right, this is Stefan again.
Hello?
Hello? Hi. Did you wish to testify?
Hi. Yes, I do.
Oh, please, please identify yourself.
Yes, my name's Tim Gary. I'm representing the Queen Surf Club. I submitted a five pages of signatures to Mayor Blongiardi and to Laura Thielen, uh, supporting, um, our proposal. We disagree with the proposal Parks and Recs came up with. Uh, this summer at Queen Surf, there were thirty-six days of contests from May first till October. Uh, the new proposal, there's a possibility of thirty-one days. We have, I've spoken with the mayor and I've spoken with our, we wanted something similar to the sixteen day rule on the North Shore. Um, they proposed four day contest and we would like to propose sixteen days of contests. These all being two day contests so that more groups can be represented. The keiki, the handicap, the first responders, the, uh, town and country, uh, contest has been going on. This way you're gonna get more groups represented, Moko surfboards included. We'd like a fifteen day cooling off period between contests. We want no contest on holidays. And the Duke Fest, we want it restricted to five days. And then one day for the HASA and one day for NSA. That would bring us up to twenty-three days. The mayor has said that he supports something similar to the North Shore. We're being, we're compromising and actually giving more than sixteen days. But Queen Surf is being, um, abused. Uh, thirty-six days in the summer for when families go down to the, uh, beach and there's a contest sometimes every weekend. This is not right. This excludes the local people. And, um, we reject the proposal by the Parks and Rec and we would like our proposal, which is more fair and more in tune with the local public. Um, also, the people that, the body surfing people have brought up a good point. They should be able to have contests at Point, Point Panic and not be involved. The swimmers, the same thing. They should not be involved also with the surf contest. Our primary thing is Duke or Queen's Surf Break is being abused. If they had thirty-six days at any other spot, the locals would object. Also, the West Side does not want to have anything to do with this. They want to take care of their own.
If you can wrap it up, please, if you can wrap it up.
No, that's it. Thank you for your hearing.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other online testifier? Remote, no? Okay, is there any in person that has not had a chance to testify? Okay, I'm gonna call a recess since there's no, um, testifiers right now. If there is, I will call the meeting back into session. Okay, so you guys can use a bathroom like you need to do. Thank you. So we're just gonna recess until three thirty. Um, after that, if you guys want to stay, we'll have a-
Yeah, the hearing has to stay open until four P M. But what we'll do is we'll recess till three thirty in case anybody has, uh, comes in late and wants to testify. Um, so you guys can hit the restroom or whatever, and then we can also talk story a little bit during recess.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna reconvene the meeting if there's anybody that wants to testify that has not. Please come up, but if not we'll just wait till four o'clock and see how it goes. Yeah, we're checking right now. Oh, is there anybody on the Zoom meeting that has not had a chance to testify that would like to do so now? Oh, please raise your hand, sorry.
So we mentioned before the administrative hearings when because it's a formal rule making hearing when we announced the time from two to four. The hearing has to stay open till four o'clock. So we you know we have half an hour, we wanted to make sure if anybody came in late. Because they saw the notice maybe they're working and they're you know jamming on in here that we're gonna stay open until someone comes in. Up until four o'clock where they can testify. I don't mean to have everybody in the room doesn't have to be quiet. We can call for testifiers that we can watch them, you know, when people come in the door. But now we're pretty much kind of waiting until you know four o'clock. If anybody wants to go because we've had a chance to talk story a little bit, you know, you don't have to it's not school, you know, you done it today. Yeah, and then again, you know, if people have questions that are online, if you want to put them into the chat. It's something that we can kind of take a look at, but we're gonna hold the the formal, you know, talk time. For anyone who comes in late that didn't have a chance to testify because they were looking at the hearing notice. But also feel free to just talk them yourself.
Thank you.
I know this isn't a Q and A session, so tell me to sit down. I'm just curious if you have a timeline of when the rules would need to be.
All right, so just to close up real quick. So again, we would like to thank everyone for participating in this process and for providing testimony in the comments made either written and or verbal. We greatly appreciate it. Any, so just to go over the next steps, I guess I should say. Any type of substantive change, excuse me, made to the shore water rule will go back to public here. Any unsubstantive change will go to the small business regulatory review board and then over to the mayor for review and signature. So that concludes the hearing. It is now, well, almost 4:00 PM, 3:57 PM. Thank you again for participating in the shore shore water rulemaking process and take care. Thank you.
Thank you.